Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April the 28th, 2020. It is now 9:00 a.m. in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're going to have Reverend Judge Cotton Howe give the invocation. It's Cotton, there he is, right there.
All right, let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, Lord, and we ask for wisdom, first of all, Lord, to know how to handle your business in amongst with government business, which, Lord, you told us that no one was, no one was in a position that you didn't appoint to be there. So, we're all here because you sent us to do these jobs. So, give us wisdom to do these jobs. Father, the Psalmist said, "May your unfailing love be with us, Lord, even as we put our hope in you." So, that's what we do this morning, Father. We trust that you've made physicians and given them intelligence and to make the best call they can. And so, we ask you to just be with us this morning, Father, and we put all of our hope in you. And we pray this prayer in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now, would everybody join me in their pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please join me in this pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, first thing I want to say is, is that if anybody wants to participate on any item that's on the agenda, the sheriff has public participation forms. If you will fill them out and hand them to the sheriff, and then he will bring them to me, and when we get to the proper agenda item, I will call your name. So, the next thing are special presentations, and today we have none. Is that correct? No presentation. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything or correct anything?
Judge, I'd like to make one correction to the item A, that's 7A2, approve the minutes from April 2nd, 2020, special call meeting. That was actually April the 7th. So, I'd like to change from April 2nd to show April the 7th.
Can we have a discussion on that? And April the 7th is the correct day. Am I right there, Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anybody else need to?
I have one item I want to pull off, and that is item 7C under personnel changes.
That is concerning Rita Killian. Am I right, Commissioner Eagle?
Correct.
All right. Do we need a motion to correct former vote of the, something to correct the date, or is that just a clerica error?
I think when you do make a motion to approve it, approve it with the date correction.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with the date correction and with the exception of 7C?
So am I.
Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the date correction and the one item 7C. Second. Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Do you want to discuss this item, Mr. Commissioner Eagle?
The only, I just was pointing this out, I saw these human resource changes or additions, changes and things that we needed to sign off on today. And I'm having an issue with the top entry here. We're showing that we have an employee in the district clerk's office that's showing 240 hours of comp time, which is the max comp time. And I'm just trying to find, I would like to have an explanation why we have an employee in this county that's not in law enforcement especially, that's running up this kind of comp time in these times, this type of, the times that we're in right now. And I don't see that there's anyone in here that can address that issue, so I'm putting it on the table. Do you have any comments, Ms. Kidd?
No, sir. It's been like that for a while.
It's been like that for a while.
So, Lee Ann, what are we doing, paying overtime?
Anything for, for just a regular county employee, not sheriff's office or law enforcement and the paramilitary? You mean for one that's just a normal county employee, when they get comp up to 240, the max, you have to pay them extra the time they have.
We have paid numerous times, sir.
On this employee?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And this employee only, correct? Pretty much?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And has this, has the prior commissioner's court had to deal with this before?
From my understanding, there was.
So, basically, I'm just calling this to the court's attention and getting this on the record, and we can talk about it at a later court. But I'm, I have questions about this. Thank you.
All right. This moves us to item Roman numeral seven, business to be discussed and considered for approval. There's nothing in road ops from Mr. Donald Lindley, but do we have something with development? Mr. Clint Head.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. Today, we have a corrected final plat of Orchard 13. This final plat was approved by commissioner's court on January 28th, 2020, and was recorded with the county clerk. Today, as back in front of you, the court has a corrected final plat to change two street names. The names are changing as follows. Cypress Lane will be changed to East Park Lane. Oakmont Lane will be changed to West Park Lane. Staff has reviewed the corrected final plat and recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any further discussion on this name change?
The reason for that change?
There were some conflicts with the street names, and they just needed to be changed.
Okay. Got it.
Conflict to 911 addressing?
Okay.
Further discussion? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve the following corrected final plat, Orchard 13 and Precinct 2.
Second. That motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the two name change, and second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
I just, I think we need to go back on this personnel changes. And subject to what I had said, I think we need to go ahead and do a motion to approve it and get it in the record.
I agree, Commissioner.
So, I'll make that motion. Subject to what, the questions that I put on the table, I move that we go ahead and accept the personnel changes as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made to accept the personnel changes. Second by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Now, financial. Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You've all received packets regarding the invoices, and for this court, they total $291,675.73. You've also been giving a spreadsheet regarding payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding these invoices?
You recommend payment, Mr. Kidd?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Judge, I'd like to make a motion to consider payment invoices for period of April 9th, 2020 through April 22nd, 2020. And we have discussed vendors payment over $10,000. There's no issues. Pay the bills of $291,675.73.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Dever to approve at the payment of the $291,675.73, second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Next item, I'm sorry, Judge, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Next item are the monthly reports that we've received by the auditor's office. If I'm remembering correctly, we've had an issue with the tax assessor, just there's some minor problems with the report. I'm going to leave this on here because it's in progress, and we've been working on it for a little bit. You may see an amended one next month, but she has made every effort to get everything to us, and we're just working through it. So, with that being said, I ask that you approve these monthly reports.
I see that under item U, library says no.
She did not get that to us until like the 16th, and we have to have them by the 15th of the month to get them on here. We have to have time to review them. And with the work, you know, with us being closed and limited staff, it's just, we don't, we're not worried about this. I believe we have it. It just didn't get to us in time to get on the agenda.
Okay.
So, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Make the motion to accept the financial reports.
Second. Second. A motion to approve the financial, or accept the financial report by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the section C miscellaneous. And the first item is consider and take appropriate action to approve purchase of glass partition and installation at Annex One license tag counter. Mr. Jay Riley and Ms. Andrea.
Morning.
Who could vote against these two people?
I believe y'all have a copy of all the bids. I went out, and we just got done redoing the license tag office. And we thought that we would like to put up glass between the ladies that worked there and the public. We've already done this at Annex One. We just completed that project, and it went well. And I believe it works very good. So, I've got two bids here. I got one, and they're both local companies from Granbury. One of them is Freedom Glass. They're the ones that done Annex One. The other bid is for Granbury Door and Window. They're another local company. On the first page would be the, if you look at the top, it's Annex One, and Granbury Door and Mirror is at 5779 to do Annex One. Freedom Glass is at $5,095. Then, we also looked at doing Acton, and Acton came out with Granbury Door and Glass for $3370, and Freedom Glass came in at $2884.30. So, Freedom was under Granbury Door and Window, all the way across the board. Now, this also includes like the speakers that go where the ladies are sitting, so they can converse with the public. And then, it's got a slot at the bottom to slide paperwork through.
Did the previous one in Annex Two?
I'm sorry?
Who did the one in Annex Two? Freedom?
Freedom.
Freedom? And they're the cheapest ones?
Annex One, Annex Two was, yeah, Freedom did them. And they did us a good job. I'm satisfied with them.
Okay. So, here, both of them together, Freedom would be the cheapest one, right?
That is correct.
So, this covers miscellaneous item one and two, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess we can. Nelda, do you have any, do you have any issues with these bids, or everything's good? Okay.
Andrea, are you ready for this? You think this is necessary?
I think it's necessary.
Okay. And yours?
I think her employees appreciate it, too.
Yes.
Jay, what's the timeframe, getting those installed if we approve it?
That's, I was waiting for that question. I'm, they could probably start the end of next week with the Annex One, and then it will roughly take them two weeks to do the Annex One and Acton. So, but I told them we'd need to start at Annex One first. So, they've got most of the stuff. Granbury Door and Mirror was four to five weeks out. They're, they're so busy. And everybody's getting, they're doing this all over. The guy from Freedom, he appreciated getting the job so much at Annex One. He says, "I'll try to bump you to the top." He says, "We've done several businesses in Granbury already. A lot of folks are doing this." So, the guy's real receptive. And they're a small, small company, but they're, they're really good. Well, both of them are good. It's just different products at this point.
Where's the money going to come from?
That was my question. Jay, you got the money? I hear crickets. Jay?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I've got the money. I didn't budget for it this year.
We'll pay for it out of fund 55.
Yeah.
That's what he wants to hear.
I knew you'd say that, and I knew you hadn't, I knew you hadn't made Jay dance a little bit.
You have to ask for it.
Very often, I haven't seen him for silence very often.
He just turns red.
You see how Jay Riley never says no to anything in the, for Hood County. He's up there dancing a little bit, but he didn't say no. But I don't appreciate that making you dance, Jay. You know, so, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and take them one at a time, then, to hear your motion on item number one, or Annex One.
Judge, I'd like to make the motion to go with Freedom Glass for Annex One at $5,095.6 out of fund 55.
I'll second that.
That motion is made by Commissioner Dever to let Freedom Glass do Annex One out of fund 55 in the amount of $5,045, $95, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number two. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve using Freedom Glass for the installation of a glass partition at Acton Annex, using fund 55, using Freedom Glass.
Okay. Do I hear? Second.
Second.
A motion is made by Commissioner White to let Freedom Glass do Acton Annex out of fund 55 in the amount of $2,884, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion again carries five zero.
Jay, tell Freedom Glass to get after it. We need it as quick as possible.
Yes, sir. I'll call them as soon as I get back.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now, you on the next one, too, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consider and take appropriate action to approve use of Acton Storage Unit Number 125 for facility maintenance storage. Mr. Jay Riley?
Yes, sir. We have, our shop is full. So, we, I noticed we had a lot of items in there that are just basically inventory that we're using. You know, we've got spare lights, we've got like tile saws and things like that that we don't use every day. So, in order to make more room, so we can do more in our shop, we would like to use that as a storage facility only, to where we just store extra air conditioner parts, anything that we use throughout the county. We do a lot of, we keep a lot of stuff. We take an old air conditioner down, and we salvage everything off of it, put it in a box, and we have it. We're trying to recycle a lot of this old stuff. So, what we're doing, I know in the past, I kind of go over there, we build a bunch of shelves, we get a bunch of stuff from Nelda that if it doesn't go to sale, or we want it, it doesn't go to sell. Stuff that we can use, we'll store it in that unit for a later date. That's what I was asking for, and I knew we had those large storage units, and it's a little bit out away from us, but it's sure handy to have that room.
And you recommend approval. It make it a lot easier to make repairs in the shop?
Yes, it gives us more room here, where I can work more than one person. We got so full, only one guy could do a project at a time in the shop, and that wasn't working.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Acton Storage Unit Number 125 for facility maintenance.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion been made. And second, to approve the use of the Storage Unit 125 for facility maintenance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Jay, it looks like you got your storage unit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Motion carries five zero. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to implement reopening of Hood County Library in phases to begin with curbside services. Ms. Jennifer Logstam, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have put together a plan to reopen the library in phases, mostly because I really want to make sure to do diligence to my staff and our patrons, that they feel safe coming in and that they feel protected. We have purchased acrylic health shields already, and they're already in place. They're removable, they're not attached, but to go across the circulation desk, so when we do let people in, we have that in place. We have a plan in place of keeping, you know, people so many feet apart and those kinds of things. So far, we've been able to serve our community, even though our doors have been closed. We have answered phones, we have signed up patrons for new accounts. We have taught people over the phone how to access online materials, which is, can be difficult sometimes. But we have over 1,200 online materials checked out right now, and our increase in some of our digital activity has gone up by 200 a month. So, between our two platforms, we have almost 3,000 things checked out digitally. So, we have been serving our community the best we can. And we've also continued to offer tax forms, we're outside the door, and we've even mailed some to some people as well. With that said, I do feel like library can be an essential part of, of the community, especially when people are needing things to do while they're at home. But I don't think essential necessarily means we have to open our doors to everybody at once. For example, we have over 3,000 books checked out, physical materials checked out right now. If we were to open up all at once, we would have a hard time maintaining, bringing all those materials in and sending them through quarantine process correctly. So, I have devised a plan along with some help from other libraries in the state that I've been in communication with, of implementing in phases and starting with curbside first for a little while, so that we can manage what's coming in and what's going out, and limiting how many items people can take out. Unlike restaurants and retailers who have curbside, their items are going home and never coming back. But the items that we send to them and they take, come back to us that have been in their homes, and we have to, the books have to go through a 72-hour quarantine, then wiped down, then checked in, the check-in process, and then reshelved. And so, that's a lot to think about when you've got 3,000 items, items out. So, I would like to start with curbside services. I would like to offer that. We have had many calls. And then, as, as we, you know, limit that, and as the state opens up more, then I want to, then I want to move it to a lobby, where they can come in, the stacks are closed, we go get what they need for them and bring it to them. And then, at that point, that second phase would be where they can make appointments for computers and such, because I think my staff is going to be busy getting all those books put where they need to go before we start letting a bunch of people come in and touch stuff. But I think we'll have limited, I will limit, like right now, our book drop is closed. If we do curbside, I will keep the book drop closed, but I'll have a place where people that are bringing curbs, coming to get curbside, bring stuff back, so I can kind of manage how much is coming in in a day, that we don't open at the book drop, and then we come in over the weekend, and we have hundreds and hundreds of books to sort through, because we have to wear gloves and masks and all of that to do. So, I would like us to open up curbside, hopefully, starting next Monday.
I really do like the way that you are proactive and have implemented a plan to protect not only yourself, but the employees and the customers of the library. So, the plan that sounds to me like you've done everything you can to protect everybody, and it's going to be a workable plan, and you're going to phase it in. So, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you that. I hear only good things in the community about what you're doing, Ms. Logstam.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
So, I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any discussion?
This would be May the 4th, right, Monday?
Yes, I would, it wouldn't, we only have limited staff this week, and I told them to kind of be on standby to come, come back full-time next week. It's going to take us, you know, if you let us do that, it's going to take me the rest of the week to kind of get organized and train them on what them, how I want them to handle things.
Yeah.
So, yes, so Monday would be curbside.
I like, I like the plan you presented to us.
Thank you.
You got a schedule, a plan to coordinate and get your staff ready to move forward.
Yes.
Nobody knows it better than you, so I like it when you come up and have a plan like that. So, that's really good. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, yes, Judge. I'll make a motion that we begin, we open the library, curbside on Monday, May the 4th, as discussed.
Okay.
And then, just move forward as you see fit.
Okay.
Till later, till when, if we have to come back and look at it. That's a wordy motion, I'm sorry. But a motion to start, to start the library and open back up on the 4th, curbside to start.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Eagle regarding the library opening phases put forth by Ms. Langdon, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Logstam.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, consider and take appropriate action on the Evergreen Solution LLC proposal to conduct a staffing study for Hood County. Ms. Melissa Welborn, good morning.
Good morning. You should have received a copy of the proposal. This is for a staffing study with Evergreen Solutions, who is currently conducting our salary study. I was asked to bring this to the court. It's entirely up to the court if you want to proceed with this today. I spoke with Evergreen last Friday, and they suggested that we could do maybe a virtual workshop, but that would have to be held somewhere besides in this courtroom, because we don't have the capability as of right now to conduct a, a virtual workshop. So, I'm, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can, or get back to you with any answers if I can't give you an answer.
Melissa, are you saying that probably we need a workshop before we go forward with the proven extra funds to?
Evergreen asked me a few questions last Friday that I could not give them an answer to, and I told her that I felt like that had to come from the court. So, I mean, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the court has. However, they wanted a little bit more specific information about what direction they needed to move in as far as the staffing study goes.
So, could you give us a rundown on what Evergreen's done to date? Because haven't they been working on this issue?
They've been doing the salary study, yes. And we are currently in more or less what they consider chapter two. They were here back in February for a week and visited with employees and department heads and also elected officials and appointed officials. They are currently looking over everything that I provided them as far as our policy, our current step in grade plan, also job descriptions. They are going through all of that information. I received a draft copy yesterday on what they had discovered as far as currently, more or less, what we currently have in place. I should have something a little bit more concrete, maybe by the end of this week. They are working from home, but they are working diligently to continue forward. Have they been able to get everything they want from our peers? I can't answer that. And that process could be very slow with everything else going on.
So, what was the, what was, what were, did they quote us originally when they started this survey?
$32,000. And that's for the salary study.
Okay, and they're, and we're looking at, they're asking for another $18,000, and this is, but this is over and above what they already had quoted us?
That is correct. It is for the staffing portion of the study. You're welcome.
When do we, when do they, how soon can we have this open workshop with these people?
Oh, I think they would be available just about at any time.
We going to do it by Zoom, or?
That is their recommendation, and a lot depends on where we meet. I think at the EOC, we can have a virtual meeting on the big screen, and that might, would probably under the, be under the direction of our IT department.
So we have a place, we can have a virtual meeting?
We do, yes.
The real thing that I think that we need here, that I've said when I met with them, is that, you know, like for the clerks in the county clerk's office or the district clerk's office to come back and say, well, if they just came back and said, well, the average pay for clerk, let's say in the county clerk's office, is X dollars, but we don't know how many people were making that X dollars. So if Katie ran her office a lot more efficiently, and she had only four people, it would show that she was paying her people a higher wage, but the other place may be having seven people with their lower wage. So that's not fair, you know? And I think from talking to you and Ms. Kidd, we need to kind of compare how much money, it always comes down to money, doesn't it? Each department is having, and how many employees they're having, to come up so that we can really find out what is the real base salary that somebody in a like county like ours is really making, to see if we're paying our employees a fair salary, or too low of a salary, or too high of a salary. Is that what we're recommending? Do you think we need to do that virtual meeting so that we can clear that up?
I think it'd be beneficial for the court, yes.
Okay.
That way, I think all court members will be there and can ask questions, instead of just going to one office, next office, all of us be there together to kind of work things out.
Could this just be an executive session of just the commissioners' court?
And it can be done, yes, an executive session.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Do you have a date in mind that you?
When do you need this information, Becky? As quickly, I know that you're working on the budget now, with a lot of input from the judge.
It would really be beneficial if we had it by the end of July.
By the end of July, so we're going into May right now. So we would like to do it pretty quickly. Can you, if we do an executive session, can you get with them and try to find out from the commissioners when we could do this, and let's have an executive session in the EOC to set up a virtual conference with them to make sure that we're all on board with what we expect in the staffing? Because that's what we were really wanting to do, right, Commissioner Dever? Is to make sure that the salaries were really matching up from all departments. So can you just check with them and find out?
You bet.
What we're going to do? And then, so I guess we could make a motion that we set up a virtual conference at the EOC at the earliest date, that Ms. Welburn can arrange with Evergreen and the commissioners to have a virtual conference, so that we can have a clear understanding regarding staffing and any other issue that may come up, and so they can begin work and see if the additional $18,000 is worth it or not.
That's correct.
Making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
I'll second that, Judge.
You have that, Ms. Lang? Kind of, we got a couple of wordy motions here today, but we're doing that. Does that sound all right to you?
Yes, sir, and I can probably have a date this afternoon.
Okay, good. All those in favor of the motion made by County Judge Massingill, and second by Commissioner Dever, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Melissa, you might, you might give us a couple of dates in case the commissioners?
Certainly, yes, I'll ask Evergreen for a couple of dates and times, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, item number six, you're still here. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the coronavirus COVID-19 emergency paid leave guidelines for Hood County employees. Ms. Welburn?
Yes, sir. On April the 14th, you voted to allow our employees to work a rotating shift, or a skeleton shift, or possibly even work from home. And they would be paid emergency paid leave based on these guidelines. Your guidelines only go through Thursday, April the 30th. So I'm here seeking direction on May 1st.
That is a good question. What, with the governor making his announcement yesterday, and what has been going on, have you been talking to any department heads about what they think should happen? Do they want to continue the emergency guidelines, or do they think that they can go back to full staffing?
I spoke to the majority of our department heads this week, or actually, the end of last week. There were actually two departments that went back full-time this week, and I think really, there's a couple that are just waiting for guidance from the court, but I believe they're ready to go back to work. Now, I have not spoke to any elected officials.
With the, with the glass partitions that are going up in, for Andrea's office there, and the number of employees that you have both at Annex One and at Acton, are you, you think that the procedures that you have in place are good enough to protect your employees and the customers that come to your office, Andrea?
My, my department, they don't want to open back up until?
You might come up and talk, you might come up and talk into the mic so that the minutes can be recorded.
I asked everyone in my employees, and they don't want to come back until the glass is put up. But we are willing to do, and go a little bit further, what we've been doing. We do, we're doing the curbside pickup, deliveries, and plates, in other words. And we're also doing the web dealer still, we're still processing all the mail, we're still bringing money in daily. It's just they don't want to open up full-time to the public until the glass is put in.
I haven't heard any complaints like we did initially about y'all running behind or not able to serve the public. I think you've done a good job in doing that with the staff and how you have set it up.
Yes, and we go outside, and we help the customers in masks, in eye gloves, and help them fill out their paperwork. We're doing title paperwork in the drop box, telling them how much it is, they put it in there, we mail it back to them. I mean, it's running smoothly, they just don't want to open up until.
Andrea, on the, on the license plates, after we completely open up, the state has given us 60 days or 90 days?
Sixty.
Sixty days after we open up.
After we open up.
So everybody's still got a free pass.
And that's also with titles as well?
Yes.
Changing of titles, there's no penalties for 60 days after we open. So, thank you.
Y'all have worked really well together, and I know that Melissa and you have talked numerous times.
Yes.
Y'all really work together well, and that's, I love hearing that.
And the phones are being answered, and everybody's been taken care of.
Yeah. Ms. Lang, what about your department? Are you?
My department, I have two offices. The court side is open and always has been open. We are, you know, we process through the window over at this court office. But the other office, we are doing by mail, phone, and e-filing. Doing the marriage license, I've, I've brought one staff member from the Annex Two office over to the Justice Center to process the marriage license. So if we open up, that would help out at the other office, I can move that, that clientele back to Annex Two. So I'm planning on opening up, whether it's a skeleton crew or whatever, I'll make the necessary precautions. But we have glass installation is finished now, and so our glass is up, and I think we're ready to go.
Okay. Is Tonia here? I haven't seen her, the district clerk. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
I don't?
And I just want to say, Jay Webster's done a great job of equipping all of our departments with what they need as far as being able to accommodate our staff and also the customers should we open back up.
Judge, would there be a problem if we take no action until Wednesday, the 30th?
Yes, sir, Thursday.
And then we let Melissa talk with each official and see what they are wanting to do, and then we can call a meeting and decide, or is that possible?
So you want me to visit with the elected officials? Because most of our appointed officials I have already visited with.
But you haven't talked with any elected?
I did not visit with any of the elected officials, except for, of course, Andy and I stay in contact with each other about what they're doing, and, and they have, they've done a great job of servicing the public as much as they could. And I was under the impression that most of the departments in this building were already semi-open or serving the public as much as possible. But I don't know that, so, no, I have not spoke to them.
Melissa, you, you told me this morning, I think, or Friday, that the city has opened up. Do you, do you know how much they've opened up, or that they're totally?
I do not, I was told yesterday afternoon around 4:00 that they had, they went back to work yesterday, is what I was told.
We have a couple of city councilmen in here, y'all locked?
All of the employees have returned?
I don't, I don't have that information, but that's a first conference. I do know that they did open to a certain extent yesterday, but I did not ask if any employees are active.
You know, I would think with the proper precautions, I don't see why all the employees couldn't come back. But, you know, I don't know if we can force them to come back.
Dr. Blocker, you're sitting back there, we might as well go ahead and get your medical advice. Would you come on down to the podium and?
While he comes down here, Judge, just to look at another option, what I've heard is that there's two departments, TAG and the library, where the public comes in and out. The TAG office is not going to be available to open up for at least two weeks per J. Riley. So we could forego that, and then for the rest of the departments that are not dealing directly with the public, we could open them up starting next week unless they know the treasure, or you guys have a problem with that. It's an option to think about, so put that on the table.
Okay. Let's hear from Dr. Blocker. He's our, as everybody here probably knows, that Dr. David Blocker is our public health authority here for Hood County, and he's been deciphering all the medical and scientific evidence, all of the conflicting evidence, I should say. But go ahead and tell us what you think about opening up the Hood County offices, Dr. Blocker.
Great, thank you, thank you, Judge. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of an update today. And so, so as, as we know, the governor's provided some guidance to reopen businesses and, and restaurants and things like that, up to a 25% capacity as of Friday. And when it comes to government offices and services, those really, those decisions really are up to this, this court, you know, for local government support. And so I would encourage, you know, be reopening to the greatest extent possible as far as our government services go, as long as we continue to keep the concerns about individual health risks, and then those, those larger, you know, gathering issues in mind that do remain in place. You know, here in our community, here in our community, we've had two deaths. And those deaths have been in that older, that older category, 65 and older, other medical complications. And we know there's a significant risk, the highest risk, to those segments of our population. Again, about 75% of folks who, who develop COVID-19, who are 65 and older, tend to, tend to have significant, you know, health impacts or death. And we do have a very large proportion of those folks in our county. However, when it comes to regular work, regular coordination, living and working around the county, most of our population is, is not at that high risk. In other words, you know, we, we, we know that people are 65 and older. There are some, some areas where we have higher risks, such as nursing homes and, and living facilities and things. And those have continued, have done very, very well with maintaining, you know, safety for their individuals, maintaining control of the folks who work in those facilities, and minimizing risk to those, that elder population. I think that's a huge piece of why we haven't seen more cases or any outbreaks in those facilities. However, however, you know, in Dallas-Fort Worth, I mean, just, just Tarrant County alone, had over 400 new cases in the last four days, as well as four more deaths. So I think as we look at this, we recognize that as we reopen our community, there's still going to be a significant amount of risk for folks who live and work here and come and go from Dallas-Fort Worth. However, we've done a very, very good job of controlling risk in our community up until now. So as far as government offices and workers, if folks who are actively sick or think they may be sick continue to stay away from work and aren't socializing with anyone outside of their own homes and seeking medical care as needed while we continue to work our way through this crisis, within the folks who are healthy and safe to go to work, we should give them an opportunity to go to work as long as we continue to do those personal protection measures, you know, hand washing, sanitizing common surfaces, and, and minimizing risks when we are servicing communities, such as we've already talked about here, with barriers between the public, limiting the number of people in and out of those workplaces that aren't already workers there that we, we know about. And so I think whether we're talking city governments, whether we're talking businesses, reopening up to that 25%, I think that's a, that's a fair, a fair approach, and that gives us, gives us an opportunity both to make sure our county is doing the work that needs to happen, our city's doing the work that needs to happen, and our community, our businesses, and, and individuals are allowed to make a certain amount of risk decision themselves to, hey, again, if you're sick, don't be out and about. But if you are safe to go to work, and you are, you know, policing yourself and your family and your close contacts, your workplace contacts, to continue to respect those social distancing measures, the personal protection and sanitation measures, well then, I, I think that, you know, I think that's reasonable. Again, at the county level, the city level, with our, our businesses and, and organizations around the community. So that's the best advice that I have. I think we can't ignore the risk, but I think we can, can control the risk and continue to minimize that impact as we, you know, go towards getting back to work.
Thank you. Anybody have any question of Dr. Blocker?
Yes, sir. Where do we stand today as far as reported cases in Hood County?
Yeah, thanks for the question. We have 18, 18 cases.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Yes, actually, well, actually, we have, we have 19, 19 cases that we've confirmed. 18 have made the dishes list, the list with Department of State Health Services. We actually have 19 total cases here that we've recorded in Hood County. One of those was, was a person who initially met the, met the criteria for release, and then had some more symptoms, and essentially had a relapse. They never completely got over COVID-19, and that person continues to be under monitoring. We've also continued to follow up with him and family members and close contacts. Outside of that, the majority of cases that we had initially, the initial wave here, have either recovered, or like I said, with the exception of one or two that we're still following closely for residual symptoms, are there. We have three that have tested positive in the last 10 days, and those three are, again, continuing to be followed with, with, you know, here locally, medically, as well as with Department of State Health Services. And so, all things considered, we are doing amazingly well here in our county. And that's why, and that's why I temper that with, I think we've done a great job with our initial actions. I think we, you know, this, this court and, and the city and, and other organizations have done a very, very good job of controlling the, the spread here. And so as long as we keep in mind that we remain just on the outskirts of one of the, the areas of, I mean, over 27, 27% of the cases in Texas, of, of the positive cases of COVID have been in Dallas-Fort Worth area. 25% of the deaths in Texas have been in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And again, a lot of our, our population continues to work or have ties to Dallas-Fort Worth. So as businesses in Dallas-Fort Worth look at going back to work, as we in our community look at going back to work, we're going to see an increased risk. However, as long as we continue to keep those, those, again, individual and social distancing measures in mind, I think we can continue to manage that risk here in Hood County, and that's the best advice I have.
Do I have any other further questions?
What was the last date we had a case come up?
The 24th.
24th of March, April?
Yes. Yeah, essentially over the weekend, and we just got that confirmation last night, that that indeed is, is tested positive.
Make sure, let me make sure I'm clear. You're saying 19, but one of them's twice, is that what you said?
There are 20 positive tests.
20, okay.
But 19 cases.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I gave the caveat.
I'm just trying to get it cleared up, sir.
Yes, exactly. And, and of those cases, it's also very important to note that the majority of our cases in Hood County have been in, in the 40 to 65-year-old age range. The two cases that we had that were over 65 both died. So that's, that's another important data point for our community. But again, we understand there's a higher risk. So, so that's, that's, understand from an epidemiologic standpoint. It's also important to understand when we layer that with how much of our population does fall into that risk category here in Hood County, which is, again, over twice the population here in Hood County is elderly, as compared to Dallas-Fort Worth, if you look at general population numbers, right? So, you know, we, we have 60 to 70? So, you know, we have 60,000 to 70,000, we don't have the official numbers back yet, but we have confirmed that about 25% of that population here are 65 and older. And then, you know, so there do, do continue to be folks who are at risk either by age or by medical conditions. And so as long as we keep those things in mind, there's a certain degree, even in the latest guidelines from CDC, latest guidelines from, from the state of Texas and the governor, continues to say, if folks are 65 and older, they should very seriously consider whether or not they go back to their regular routine of work and day-to-day life, because there is an increased risk. And you can't just draw that as age level, I'm just saying, when you look at the epidemiology numbers, that's one, one point, one important data point that we can measure, that we can report here. But, but I think, I think we've done a very good job of walking through this step by step and advising, again, governments, city, you know, businesses, schools, things like that, to do our best to follow and mitigate that risk so far. And that's borne out in the numbers so far, Commissioner Eagle, the fact that we have so few cases here in Hood County.
So you keep opening the door up for me to ask another question, and that question is this, you say, you just testified that we've got two cases, two deaths, right?
That's correct.
But we've talked about that, and there's many other conditions both of those patients had where you can't really put it on COVID as the fact, as the cause of death. I know that's happening, and I, you know, I don't want to, this is with all due respect too, with, you know, we've, we've had this conversation before.
Right.
But it's just like, when you point out that, when you point to Dallas-Fort Worth, I pointed to Parker County, which has twice the population, 7,200 more people in the 65-plus category, numbers, not percentages, they have zero deaths. And so it's, I think that, you know, we need to see the big picture, I guess, is where I'm, what I'm trying to say. And if, if we've got the two deaths that really many, many complications, we need to call it that way. We need to let the people, the citizens of this county understand that this guy, these two people didn't just, were healthy one day and died of COVID the next. I mean, is that fair? Do you think that's fair?
So Commissioner Eagle, I can only give you the facts as I understand them, and again, we have to look at the, at the epidemiology, at the numbers, at the, at the history and what's going on around, around our state and around our country. It is a fact that the two who died were both over 75, and they had other health conditions. One of them, one of the, one of those health conditions included pulmonary problems, which, again, increases risk of any illness, influenza-like illness, COVID-19, et cetera. And again, we have discussed that, and we have reported that, and that is consistent with what's been seen in, in other communities and other cases. So, so the challenge is, again, individual by individual, household by household, care facility by care facility, how many folks in, in Hood County meet those criteria? And again, the facts are that we have over twice the number, or twice the percentage of folks that have, that have those risk criteria that live here in Hood County every day. Now, how much they are going out and going to shopping versus having someone else bring stuff to them, how much they are going out and participating or running these businesses in our community as we start to reopen, that's an individual, you know, risk that, that needs to be mitigated, looked at, again, family by family, business by business across our community. But those are the facts. And so, and so though, it's important to me that I put those in front of this group in this community. That's my job, that's my duty as the health authority, and it's your responsibility to figure out how that best fits, you know, the, the running and working of our, of our community and, and how much you allow those businesses and those organizations to make their own decisions, which is really an important factor here, right? As far as how much, you know, and again, household by household, business by business, how much they want to, want to go back to work or partake in those activities. I just recommend that everyone keep the public health risks in mind, the guidelines that we've had all along since before we started having any cases in Hood County. We talked about folks shouldn't be out and about if they're physically sick, either at work or at school or, or at the grocery store. They should seek medical care if needed, wearing masks and gloves and things like that, to some extent, there may be some protection from that. But again, if someone's sick enough, they shouldn't be out anyway. They should find other ways to take advantage of those resources, whether it's having groceries delivered or having someone else do things for them while they are physically sick until they have a chance to recover. So far, our community's done very well with that, and I expect that we'll continue to do that. So, so here, as far as government organizations and getting back to work, I mean, we've, we're doing physical barriers, we're limiting access to workplace, we're going out and meeting folks, or doing drive-through services as much as possible to minimize the number of folks coming and going and the, the risks to our staff for the county and the city and risks, risks to the folks so they can get the work done they need to do. And I think as long as we continue to keep those things in mind, I think we'll continue to do well as we walk through the rest of this. I think we are past the biggest risk for our community, but when you look at the numbers in Dallas-Fort Worth, you can't ignore the fact that we still have a lot of active spread of COVID going on and still a lot of challenges that will be coming our way as we reopen.
Doctor, on the death certificate of these two individuals that died here in Hood County, does it say multiple causes? Does it say like pulmonary issues or?
Fair enough, fair enough. So what I'll tell you is that I have not seen, seen the death certificates. There are a total of three deaths that had, happened to be positive for COVID at the time of death. Two of those were deemed to be COVID-related deaths. However, with any death certificate, generally what happens is they write the cause of death was acute pulmonary failure or acute heart failure, et cetera, and then in the sub-points they would say this was complicated by the fact that they happened, they had COVID or what have you at the time. So, so I have not seen these particular death certificates, but having written them myself in the past and in the discussions I had with the medical examiner's office related to some of these cases, that's what, that's what my understanding is, that two of those were deemed to be COVID-related deaths. The third death that we had in Hood County that is, is not on the official state numbers, happened to be tested positive for COVID while they died of other causes. And again, that is important because, because again, it's, the individual, the individual didn't have any active COVID symptoms, the third case I'm talking about. They, they died of sudden, a problem related to cardiac issues, and they did not have any, any symptomatology of COVID and no, no evidence of active COVID infection at the time, other than this positive test. And so, so they've already, that, that sorting has already been done, Judge. That's my best answer to the question. Like I said, we've had three deaths, two of those were deemed COVID-related, the third was an incidental finding of COVID.
Have you spoken to the public health authority in Parker County about how they do it? You know, congestive heart failure is a pretty common cause among elderly people.
Right.
Has always been cause of death, or it's myocardial infarction or congestive heart failure. Maybe they've had a lot of deaths in that age group. You know, a lot of people have died since these guidelines have been put in. Maybe they are more strict about putting COVID. Is it required that everybody that die be tested for COVID-19?
No, it's not. And, and to answer your question about Parker County, I have, I have been in regular electronic communication with Parker County and their, their health authority. However, I've not had any direct phone calls or discussions about this specific point with them. So I can't, I can't speak knowledgeably about that matter. But what I can speak knowledgeably about is, is the individual cases that we followed up with the medical facilities, the treating medical physicians, the medical examiner's office as relates to Hood County and the state of Texas. There's a, there's, there's a limited amount of information that we have access to for other counties, unless those counties choose to release it to us. And so again, Judge, I have not had that specific conversation with Parker County. I do know that when it comes to the state reporting and the number of deaths that are listed as COVID-related on the Department of State Health Services website, which is updated every day, those numbers that Commissioner Eagle related to, and those, those are the common numbers that we can all reference, right? And it says, this is what Dishes has said are COVID-related deaths and, and COVID cases. And so if Parker County today, I didn't look at it today, but if Parker County still says zero for deaths, COVID-related deaths, that means that those discussions have already happened, they've already had the opportunity to discuss that with their health authorities, their medical examiners, and they have felt, and Department of State Health Services, more importantly, has felt that those deaths were not COVID-related, similar to our third case I was mentioning earlier.
This is with all due respect, okay? But our third death that was reported as a COVID death for a while, wasn't it? Isn't that true?
No, that is not true, actually, Commissioner Eagle. I never reported that as a COVID death.
Okay, well, it was in your report that, and you did do a parenthetical, I'll give you that.
That is correct.
Here's the question I've got. My understanding is that patient came in coding when he came into the emergency room. He was coding, in other words, he was, his heart had stopped when he was rolled in. Do you, are you familiar with that?
Commissioner, I'm very familiar with the case, and again, we still need to respect the privacy of the individuals and, and like, but what I can say is that the patient was, was dead on this, dead on the scene when ambulance services provided care. In other words, family members and others were providing CPR at the time the medical, medical system was engaged on this particular patient. This particular patient was, was officially declared dead on arrival at an emergency facility. However, however, again, the, the heart had stopped at the time that they were receiving services. The post-mortem examination is where COVID, COVID positive test was obtained, when the autopsy was done by Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office, as they do routinely for any questionable deaths, suspicious deaths, they, they wanted to know the cause of death. Was it, was it overdose? So was it complications of some drug the individual was taking, what have you? That's the reason that particular person met criteria for, for COVID testing amongst other testing they were doing. And there was an incidental finding at the time of the autopsy, it was not deemed to be a cause related to the death.
So to sum that one up, this person came into the emergency room, as you stated, dead. They called it coding, is what I understand from the hospital. They tried to revive, didn't, called it on the day he died, and several days later, you came back with a positive COVID ta, finding, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
This, we need to get back to the item that's on the agenda.
Thank you.
I'm starting to lose all we're even talking about. So you're recommending, I'm trying to get this straight, you're recommending that we can go back as long as we use precautions?
That is absolutely right, Commissioner, Commissioner White. My recommendation is that we consider resumption of, of government services and support to our community, as long as we continue to keep that in mind, as far as individual workers, making sure that they're healthy when they come to work, and that we have appropriate barriers or protections between them and the, and the public that they, that they serve, and encourage, you know, enforcement there, as, as we've already been, we were doing that before the governor locked down the state, and, you know, and, and we were already, we already had some, some excellent pockets of, of work there. Now we've had time, we've had, had a number of weeks to prepare even more appropriately as far as, as, as far as physical barriers, as far as personal protections, and as far as program management. And those are always the things we look at when you're trying to control any disease or any spread or any exposure, right? What are you doing individually to protect yourself? What are you doing to control the environment, such as, you know, barriers of glass or divisions between the, the customers and the staff who are working? And then how do you put procedures in place to limit the number of people coming and going from a, from a common space or accessing a common hallway or bathroom or something like that? Those are the three control measures that we use in anything related to occupational environmental protection. And so this is no different in, in this case, as far as medical recommendations for the county.
Oh, you're recommending we can go back full, full staff or 25%?
The staff, the staffing is not as much of an issue as it is to access to the public. The 25% recommendations for, for businesses and organizations, again, movie theaters, restaurants, et cetera, are to continue to limit the number of people in a given closed space at a time, or coming and going from a parking lot at a time. So when it comes to the customer service, I would consider that when you look at how you continue to service customers in the different businesses, but, but as far as staffing goes, those staffing models, I'd leave up to the different, different organizations to sort that out. And honestly, I think, I think you've probably had, heard anything you need to hear from me. I'm going to go ahead and step away. I do have clinic this morning, I have to get to that, I have patients waiting, but I'll be available after the meeting, after the Commissioners Court for further communication, as always, to, to Commissioners and to our other leaders.
Thank you, Dr. Blocker. You're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On behalf of Hood County, thank you.
I think, I think that what Melissa, HR Director's wanting to know is how we're going to handle this, starting either Monday or May the 1st, will we continue paying our employees to stay at home and work? Or I think that's the direction the treasurer needs to know, the officer needs to know, and our HR person. Where we going to go from here?
We have a city councilman here that'd like to say something.
I wanted to answer your earlier question, Chris Kaufman, all employees are back to work, the intention of opening on May 1st.
Opening on May 1st?
Yes.
All employees are back to work? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That's the direction, I kind of answered the question right there. We're going to go back, tell our employees to come to work, instead of going by the guidelines we was using before. I think that's the direction.
Correct, which they expire on Thursday, April the 30th.
But it doesn't answer the question whether or not we open up to the public those departments that don't have their shields up yet.
That is correct. That would be direction from the court.
That's not on the agenda anyway. So we don't really need to, we don't need to address that with this agenda item, correct?
We need to address our employees, though, as far as are we going to require, if those departments, like the library, TAG, who are saying they can only accommodate those maybe by curb service, but do you still expect those employees to report to work?
Well, that's, that's my point, and it does go in line with it. I sat there and observed, I'm in the same building, and before we went to this skeleton crew, we had six or eight employees down there looking at each other all day and couldn't do anything. It just didn't make, but I have no problem with, if that's what we want to do. We're still not letting the public in because they're not protected. Yet those employees are not needed unless we bring the public in, and that's kind of my issue.
Well, and that's true. That's entirely up to the court, and if that's not going to be addressed, then I assume we'll remain doing what we've been doing as far as our doors either being locked or open to the public. But we need direction on how we want to handle our employees.
Trish, is the city open to the public May 1st?
May 1st.
In my office, we went back Monday through Thursday this week, full staff, Monday through Thursday, because we're going to have enough work, we probably wouldn't have enough work to work on Friday, but if you want us here, we'll be here, but we started back today.
It's hard, ladies. A few departments are shut down for our departments to stay completely busy the whole time now.
So City Hall's going to be open to anybody coming up there? Y'all going to still have a nurse up there or somebody to take temperature, or do you know that?
I think that question, Judge, it's probably, but I'm not going to say, I didn't ask that question.
But City, okay. Well, does anybody want to make a stab at a motion?
But our, our deal ends on the 30th, right?
Yes, sir.
30?
Thursday. Uh huh, that's correct.
What, Thursday?
Thursday, this coming Thursday.
And the 1st is Monday?
Friday, Friday, May 1st is, this week, yes.
Question is, are we going to continue operating as we are and allow people to stay at home and get paid, or come May the 1st? Of course, every elected official can run their office however they want to. That's up to them. They answer to the public, they don't answer to us. Every appointed official answers to us, or to the, to the judges, but we need some guidelines, so we're going to continue doing what we doing?
Correct, extend what we have in place.
We're going to let, we're going to say, if you're not here, you don't get paid, or use your vacation time or sick leave. I know there's something else out there, there's 80 hours out there that can be used.
That is correct. Once employees are required to come back to work, there is a, an act in place, and it's employees' rights regarding the coronavirus, they have 80 hours that they can use regarding a COVID situation. Now, it's a little bit more strict than what we've been putting in place as far as our guidelines, but it also deals with daycare and possibly those issues with employees who just don't have daycare right now.
And just to clarify, there are some employees working from home.
Oh, yes, I know.
There are some.
Yeah.
That can't work from home.
Yeah.
But there are some, and we have it coded in the system, which ones are working from home and which ones just.
Yeah, and that's the question we need to give Melissa, HR Director, we can continue doing like we're doing, or come May the 1st, it's over. You come into work.
Hey, Jay Webster, Emergency Manager Coordinator, did you want to say something, Jay? Come on up to the speaker.
I can answer your question concerning the city and temperatures there. So they're going to assign somebody at each building to take temperatures for a few days. What he said is that they're looking at, since none of the businesses that were allowed to open back up to the 25% rule are taking temperatures, then they may not look at taking to open back up to the 25% rule are taking temperatures, then they may not look at taking temperatures either. But for right now, somebody at each building will be assigned until further notice.
Are they going to restrict the number of people that they're going to allow into their city offices?
Based on his conversation yesterday with me, yes, they were. Right now, they're only open for employees, so there's no access to the public to come into the buildings. They're looking at what that's going to look like come Monday, and then go from there. But then, based on his conversation yesterday, it would be restricted for a little while up until, and they're also waiting on to see what the numbers look like coming out of the testing that we did Sunday, and the testing we're going to be doing again on next Tuesday. Is that clear as mud?
Well, yeah, that clears up everything for me. It's clear as mud. I think Andrea, being an elected official and her office, which you have all the, you're not going to have the public open up right away, so whatever you have in place, I'm assuming, like Commissioner Dever said, you have the right to control your office and your employees the way you see fit, and you're serving the public right now. So I'm assuming that you're going to keep your schedule the way it is for a time. Am I correct on that, Andrea?
But we're going to start coming in on Fridays now.
Okay.
So that would leave the librarian, who is not an appointed official, we could have them effective Monday, they can all come to work. So, yeah, I would think. It's my opinion.
So really, all we can do is, everybody that, that the court, that is under the court, that's not under, that's not under elected official, we can have them come to work Monday. Everybody that's under elected official, they, they run their own departments.
That's correct.
Is, am I correct?
Yeah. Are they going to stay at home, or we're going to go back to normal, normal hours?
Correct.
On the elected officials? Yes.
And I was just going to add one thing, the chief of probation was here. I've already been working with her on a plan to start on Monday, to how she could start seeing the people that they needed to start seeing, spread out over the week. So she's already been working on a plan to open up Monday to see how they can start seeing and getting some testing done on, on the probationers that need to be done.
Do you want us opening up full staff?
Yes. So she's going to come along, I believe, this week, get everything organized, and then Monday, get it set up with however their game plan is on that Phase 1 of spreading out what, you know, instead of having everybody come in on that one day, they're going to spread it out over the week.
That's why I was so complimentary on Jennifer Logston, the librarian, about her being so proactive. She's, she's so familiar with the services that she has and what she has to do to run the library. She was proactive and having a plan that was going to protect her employees and protect the customers as well. It was just a great deal, and it sounded really good to me, and so we're going to do that. And I would hope that the elected officials would do something like that to protect their employees and to protect the public. So I guess what you said, Commissioner White, is what we can do as far as the elected officials, they're going to be able to control when they can come back to work, but as far as the payment on the thing is that, are we going to say that as of, what date is Monday then? Monday is the...
May the 4th is Monday?
That...
Back to normal?
Go back to normal, that you're going to have to...
Plus, like HR Director said, there is 80 hours out there to use if you decide not to come in.
If you're sick.
But 80, they...
That's correct, if it's related to COVID.
Right. Related to Corona. So if you're, I mean, it's, it is what it is. If you don't come in and you don't have Corona, you're using sick leave or vacation time.
So whatever y'all decide, we have to know specifically, because if I can only let some department use the COVID admin weed and not the others, what you need to know that, I have to separate it. I need to know if I should pay them or not.
What you, what you're saying is, you've got disparity here between appointed official employees and elected official employees. You have two criteria, and that's not going to work. Does, does that make sense? You need a decision for every employee, period, so that it's clear, or you're going to have this going on for quite some time.
How do you, Treasurer and Andrea, how do you handle it when I see your office shuts down for inventory or other issues, and you shut down to the public? Do you, all your employees still come to work?
We're in, we don't shut down for inventory and stuff like that.
Okay. Okay.
We've been alternating shifts right now, but during payroll, first payroll we had during skeleton crew, it worked out so well, so now we're full staff, especially on payroll.
I think that's good to know. I mean, it's either all or none.
We're not asking for the public, though. I mean, even though we weren't locked, most of the people that come in are employees.
Right.
Does this mean we do whatever we want? We just need a...
Need direction. Yes.
Well, the only one department that I can think of that is going to be a problem with is going to be the Texas Assessor Collector with her office, because you have so many, when you have 100% open to the public, you know, you need all the employees that you have up there, the eight employees or whatever it is. But we don't have the public coming in, then they're on top of each other, and you don't need all of them. So, but what you're saying is, even in that one department, you need to know, you can't make the distinction if you let...
We can just extend this for a little bit longer until all the departments are up and running. And then each department can figure out what they need to do, because like Mel does, there's many in her office that have health issues, all of mine, my whole staff, we're all at risk, we're high risk. But what I do is, I have a skeleton crew, we have one person in the office per day, and that includes me, but then I do come in every day for a few hours to make sure things going all right. And then as soon as I can send them home and get them out of that building, I do. Katrina works part days, and I, we help her so she can get out.
So what you're saying, Leanne, is that as far as making this work from the Treasurer's standpoint, what you need to do is to pick some date in the future that says, hey, on this date, all employees must be back at work?
I mean, the only, well, you...
Becky's shaking her head, yes. The auditor saying yes. Are you agreeing with her that that's what it has to be? Because...
Say it again.
Can you, can you speak in the microphone, please?
No.
I'm dead, I'm sorry.
Say that again, sir?
My question was, you're saying that all employees, whether they work for an elected official or an appointed official, need to come back on the same day, because there's no way that you're going to be able to code what you need to code in order to...
I mean, we can. We can. We know the elected officials versus the appointed officials, but that's...
I'm talking about the employees. Whether it's an, whether an employee works for an elected official or an appointed official, they're all employees of the county.
Right.
All employees are employees of the county except the elected officials.
That, honestly, my recommendation is if you have two, well, library's opening Monday, right? She said full staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But TAC can't open until they get further down the line. They can't have all their employees there at one time, right? So, I mean, why would you exclude their office? I mean, we've had six weeks to put glass up. So why would we just exclude their office on this and make everyone else come back to work, but not them?
I got a motion. I'm going to make a motion that the coronavirus, coronavirus COVID-19 emergency paid lead guidelines for Hood County employees that expires on April 30th expire by its own terms, and that people come back to work in this county on May the 1st. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, that all employees come back to work when the coronavirus order regarding the Hood County employees expires on April the 30th, that all Hood County employees come back to work on Friday, May 1st. Second by Commissioner White. Any discussion?
Let me ask, was that, did you say Friday or Monday? I, I missed it.
Friday. May, May 1st is Friday. That's the starts of the pay period, all that. The cities can do it, we can do it, right? Anybody got a problem with that? Let me know.
And Jay and I are available if any of the department heads or elected officials need anything as far as their staffing goes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a question, if it's relevant.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Are offices open to the public right now? Does that mean all offices are open to the public as of May 1st?
My motion was all employees come back to work.
I understand that. But our door is locked to the public, and we just need to know what to do? If you want to leave it up to our, our discretion, I'm fine with that, but I, if you want to do what's right.
I think it's up to the elected officials to decide for their department, and then the appointed officials are under the court. So just all the employees come back.
You all, and elected officials can make the proper, uh, uh, procedures to protect the public and your, your employees.
Yes.
Well, let's, you want to add that to your motion, Commissioner Eagle, or not?
I don't know what I'm, what am I adding? I'm sorry.
That the elected officials make the decisions whether they are open to the public, and the appointed officials are open to the public. Is that what you said, Leanne? You don't agree with that? You're shaking your head.
No.
Is that what Becky said?
We have several offices in our building, so we are ready to open the public.
With, with your addendum, Judge, I'll make that motion.
That doors are open?
Okay. I think Commissioner Eagles' motion was is that all county employees, whether you work for an elected official or an appointed official, that you will be back to work on Friday, May the 1st, since that's when the expiration of the order concerning Hood County employees expires on its own on April the 30th of 2020. And that the, um, the elected official's going to determine whether or not they're going to open 100% to the public or not. But that the appointed officials will be open 100% to the public. Is that in conformity to your motion, Mr. Commissioner Eagle?
Well, I...
I'll make any additional correction you'd like.
Can I help? Sure. I'll go back to my original motion, and the appointed officials be open with their discretion, just like, well, Angela's elect, Angie's an elected official, but the elected officials can figure out what they need to do on their own, can't they?
Yes.
Do we need to, I can't tell another elected official what he's going to do.
Right.
So how about use common sense? Open up on the 1st and use common sense. That's my motion. How about that?
Everybody clap, do y'all know how we're going to tell Leanne McCoy how to code everything then on the employees coming back? See, that's the whole problem.
Her problem.
The devil, that's her problem?
Yeah.
Is that what you said, sir?
Use compensation. Why is it her problem?
I didn't hear you, sir.
That's her problem.
Yeah. That's Leanne's problem, to figure it out. Okay. That's, okay.
Well, from what I understand, come Friday, May 1st, all Hood County employees are to report back to duty, and they will be coded as such on their time sheets, unless, of course, it is COVID-related. And again, there is a law in place that protects those employees for 80 hours until December the 31st, 2020. Now, once those 80 hours have been exhausted by an employee, then we look at the situation after that.
How about with that addition?
I like that. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got to have that. Okay. Do you have that down, Katie?
I'm recording it, so I should get it.
Okay. So it's, all employees come back on Friday, May the 1st, and they're subject to the 80 hours of the COVID compensation guidelines.
That is correct. It is a law. It's called the employee rights.
And if an employee uses up all of that, we will have to address that when it happens.
That's correct.
Okay. We got a second to that motion?
Yes, second.
Commissioner White seconds that motion. Any further discussion?
First.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See what a good group this is.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Five, nothing. Thank you, Ms. Welber. Okay. This brings us down to item number seven, considering and take appropriate action to allow the Sheriff's Office to construct a covered pavilion at no cost to the county outside the back of the LEC. This pavilion will be paid for by the Hood County Law Enforcement Association and constructed by Deputy Angel Lopez, Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, I am working, we all are working, all my employees are working, have been working, and will continue to work to serve the public. So if there's no, there shouldn't be any question about Sheriff's Office and the related offices and people I control. On this agenda item, we got some picnic tables that were donated by Lowe's, and we sat them out on the back behind the squad room, and so it's on the grass in the sun. And the Law Enforcement Association has offered to pay for awnings, but it'll be built onto county property. So I wanted to bring this to you. So it won't cost the county anything, and Deputy Lopez will be constructing that at no cost to the county.
I saw it. It would be beneficial to your employees at this time, too, to have that covered on.
Because we can't go out for lunch or anything like that, and they come and sit on the picnic tables, and so when it's raining or sunny, this will help. So I'd appreciate it if you would approve that, since it's an attachment.
How big is the awning?
I'm not exactly sure how big it's going to be. My chief deputy just walked out. Big enough to cover the picnic tables, and there's three of them.
So probably about 15 yards.
25, 30 feet by 15 or 20 feet.
I'm just curious, Roger, it's not, I'm, I just figured you knew.
I didn't hear an exact...
I make a motion to allow the Sheriff's Office to construct a covered pavilion at no cost to the county outside the back of the LEC, which will be paid for by the Hood County Law Enforcement Association and constructed by Deputy Daniel Angel Lopez.
Second. So the motion is in made in second to allow the pavilion to be built behind the LEC at no cost to the county, to be paid for by the Hood County Law Enforcement Association, and constructed by Deputy Angel Lopez. Motion by Commissioner Eagles, second by the county judge, Ron Massengill. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight. Hopefully, we can get through this. Discuss to allow Jack Wilson of On Target LLC to make a donation of a 10-round rotary magazine to Hood County Constable Precinct 3. This magazine is to replace a missing magazine from a Ruger 22 rifle that was taken into custody from a writ of possession on September the 23rd of 2019. This weapon was awarded to Constable Precinct Number 3 Inventory by Judge Kathy Gwynn at a property hearing on March 18th, 2020. The value of this magazine is $20.
Yes, sir. And that's a...
It's not any good without the magazine, is it?
Can't use it. No, Mr. Wilson came and evaluated the weapon and said that's all it needed, and it's, it's valued at between $450 and $500.
Okay.
And he's going to donate the magazine.
Okay. The magazine is only $20 for this, the round clip that, or magazine that fits in it.
And it will be used by the Constable's Office. It's now in the inventory of Hood County.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the magazine from Jack Wilson for the 22 Ruger rifle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to approve date change for the North Texas Austin Healy Club from Saturday, March 1st, 2020 to Saturday, September the 19th, 2020. Proof of insurance has been received. Anybody going to speak on behalf of this from the Austin Healy Club? Okay, I saw in our paperwork the proof of insurance that's here. I don't see, I don't, I'm sure that if it was a conflict that we would do it. So subject to there being another on conflict on there, I move that we go ahead and accept the date change from March 1st, 2020 to September the 19th of 2020 to the North Texas Austin Healy Club.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number 10, consider and take appropriate action to change the date of May 8th, 2020 Commissioner's Court back to the original date of May 12th of 2020. The reason that the date was changed to begin with is that there was a probate or legal seminar for all the judges and commissioners or something to go to. And of course, that has been canceled because of the COVID. So, since it was canceled and this was going to be on a Friday and we had plenty of time to inform the public and we want to go ahead and just keep it all on Tuesdays if we can. So that's why we're moving it just back to the original date of Tuesday, May the 12th of 2020. So I make that motion to move it back to the original date of May 12th of 2020.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number 11, consider and discuss, quote, "all businesses and all people are essential" resolution and take appropriate action thereon.
Judge, could I start?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute, I'm the one that brought this.
Judge, can I have the floor?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
All right, that's important. You know, I'm, I'm one of the newbies, there's three of us here who's new to court. I just received this resolution at 8:00 this morning. It's about three pages long and I really need some more time to understand what it's, what the implications of passing this. I'm not against it, not in favor of it, I just don't have enough information so far about this resolution, how to vote on it. I don't know what the implications are if we pass or deny it. So, therefore, I'd like to table this issue until we can get more information, including- Including, but not limited to, the Attorney General's opinion that was presented by the county attorney about the legality of what the court has done. So, therefore, I'm going to make a motion because I don't think I've got the information on that. What's it going to happen to the county as far as grants, loans, money passed? So, I'm making a motion to table this issue until we have a chance to investigate more about what's going to happen if we pass this.
Ron, I'd like to talk a little bit. I had the same thoughts about the legalities of this. So, Sunday at 5:36, I talked to TAC and I talked, emailed Jim Allison, who's our Texas County, Associate County Judges and Commissioners Legal Counsel. And I asked him about this resolution. And I don't, you know, and so this is what I asked him. I said, we have an item that has been placed on the Hood County agenda Tuesday by a commissioner. It is a resolution to deem all businesses essential and to declare Governor Abbott's GA 14 order illegal and unconstitutional. It states that all, if passed, all businesses in Hood County can open immediately. My question is, can or does a commissioner court have a legal authority to defy an executive order from the governor? Also, can a court be held liable for any damages or fatalities that might occur from this action? He wrote back to me at 6:13, Commissioner White, the commissioner's court has no authority to adopt such orders and the orders by the governor supersede orders by the county judge under Chapter 418 of the government code. The proper procedure to challenge an order by the governor would be to file in district court. I just thought I'd tell y'all, you know, I've had questions about the, this. This is, this is who judges and commissioners go to. He is our lawyer and he answers our questions. I don't know, I don't know the legalities of this either, but I'm going to listen to what this man tells me, you know, that, for right now.
So I've been cut off by two commissioners.
I've got a point of order, point of order.
Hold on, everybody now, we're going to do this with proper decorum on the thing. Go ahead. You finished, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that we didn't vote on something before, you know.
Well, all I'm asking for, I think the point of order is, I'm asking to table this because I don't have enough information on it to understand what the ramifications are of voting one way or the other. That's why I'm making a motion to table it until such time as we get something from the Attorney General and also investigate what other issues might happen to us if we pass something like this against the governor and, and the consequences. So, I still leave my motion, asking for a, a motion on the table to table.
And I'm going to point out that Cotton, Mr. Commissioner Cotton received this yesterday. He may not have read it till this morning, but he had it yesterday.
8:00 PM last night, I received an email and I didn't see it till this morning as I came to work.
Well, regardless of this, I see that Matt Mills is in the back. Mr. Mills, you wrote and asked Attorney General Paxton on March the 20th of 2020 as to whether or not Governor Abbott's orders were constitutional. Did you, sir?
Yes.
Have you received any reply from Attorney General Paxton to your letter?
No, I think the AG has up to six months, so he may take the full six months and it might be a moot point by the time he answers, maybe in time for the next crisis, but I'm not holding my breath for what the AG is going to do anytime soon necessarily.
Okay, you heard what Commissioner Cotton said was Jim Allison's reply as to the proper way that to challenge the constitutionality of this resolution. Do you agree or disagree?
Can I come up? Okay, I'll try not to be biased. Obviously, y'all know where I'm coming from just on a policy standpoint, but from a technical legal standpoint, what Bruce has said, what Ron has said, yeah, I mean, you can put forth this motion and this resolution and basically it's a resolution that for me is very similar to the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution from six months or nine months ago. Basically, let's say that the state had, or the feds had imposed something that y'all deemed unconstitutional, the sheriff deemed it unconstitutional, your resolution is that, hey, we're not going to enforce this. This is not going to be what we do in Hood County. So, but theoretically, if they did that on guns and some DPS or somebody could come in and arrest somebody on that and it would still be the law, but y'all are just kind of saying, hey, we don't like this and we don't want to enforce it. So, I think that's the gist of Dave's resolution is, hey, even though this is still the law, we in Hood County want to say, go back to work. Does that kind of make sense?
Have you read it, Matt? It says, we're saying it's illegal in this resolution.
Well, I think he's saying, obviously, that's his legal opinion or his personal opinion that what the governor has done is, is illegal in terms of being not in line with the state constitution, particularly, I would say, Section 17 of the Bill of Rights. So, I mean, that's, that's his opinion, obviously, you can vote differently, but it, I'm trying to just be unbiased here and just kind of give a legal overview of it.
If I may, first off, I object to being rounded off at the pass on this. I'm going to start with that, but I want to address Mr. Commissioner White's concerns to start with.
Do you, do you want me to go sit down? I mean, I'm-
No, you, I want you to stand here because you can throw your two cents in. Since you're, since you did seek an Attorney General's opinion that you're not going to get back for a long time.
Right, and I, I don't think, I mean, the Attorney General is not going to cut the legs out from under the governor. That's not going to happen. He may nibble at the edges of what some of the counties and cities have done, but I, I don't think he's going to slap down the governor at all.
So I've read, I've read Jim Allison's page and a half, first year law student brief that he sent as an amicus brief down to the Attorney General to follow up what our county attorney sent down there. And I'll tell you the first place I disagree with his letter and this is going to, there's going to be case law coming out of this for years. But Jim Allison, attorney for TAC, is basically saying this is not a strict scrutiny case. We're talking constitutional rights. He's taught, there's three levels of scrutiny for a constitutional case. The top level is when a constitutional right is, is being violated. It's strict scrutiny, is that correct?
Right.
Jim Allison's decided summarily that this would be decided on a rational relationship basis. He is absolutely wrong on that particular point to start with. I object to, so that's my response to Jim Allison's three-minute elevator discussion back with Commissioner White. And I also object to Commissioner, I put this on the agenda and I commit, and Commissioner Cotton got a copy of this yesterday. He can vote no on it. That's why we're here, so.
Are you done? I still have the floor, Commissioner Eagle.
Okay, here's the deal.
But I, this has come through court before on us junior people, we're, we're new at this, I don't understand it, I want to know more and we've done it before in this court, table the issue till we better understand what the ramifications are. I still have a motion on the table to table it. Either second it, let it go, dismiss it, and then we can go on. But I think the point of order, I've got a motion on the table, Judge.
I, I agree. So there's a motion made by Commissioner Cotton that we table the resolution that's been put forth by Commissioner Eagle. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion been made in second by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Dever, that we table this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not the way a commissioner's court in Hood County really can contest the illegality of a governor's orders. Y'all all heard him yesterday saying that his orders supersede any kind of local government orders. Is there anybody here that did not hear this?
The King has spoken.
Judge, judge.
Open up, openly, openly, if you voted unanimously to reject unconstitutional orders, what has changed?
Out of order, Mr. Criswell. You're out of order. Don't ever stand up here and say that. This meeting is now adjourned, adjourned peacefully.